Thank you. All right. First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. Do I have any requests for changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
All right.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor approving the agenda say aye.
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 Reposed? Agenda is approved. Moving on, we have next up the approval of the minutes from the meeting held Monday, December 9th, 2019. Do I have any requests for edits or concerns about the minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll prove to approve the planning commission minutes dated December 9th, 2019.
All right. Do I have a second to approve the minutes?
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor approving the minutes say aye.
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 Reposed? Anyone like to abstain? All right. Minutes are approved. We have no public hearings this evening, and it looks like we have a planner's report review of planning commission training curriculum. And Julie, I believe you'll be walking us through this presentation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do you have to spell your name for the record?
No, I don't think so. I think it's documented. So I do have a PowerPoint presentation to share with you this evening. I do appreciate your coming in tonight for this singular item. As you know from our work plan, the staff had identified the creation of a training curriculum for new commission members. And we particularly wanted to address that this year because with the appointments that will be coming up in February and March, we have the potential for six openings on the commission now. We expect and we hope that some of you reapply for your existing seats. But we do want to start implementing a broader training curriculum for the commission members than the legal training that is received early on in the appointment. So staff has spent some time preparing a training curriculum for you. We'd like, I'd like to go over it this evening. And I'm not looking for any formal adoption or approval. I'm looking for feedback from you. Particularly are any of the slides or terms that are used confusing? Do you feel it kind of flows in the right order? And are there any things that we might have missed at a staff level? We tried to give it a pretty comprehensive overview, but you're the ones who sit in the commissioner's chair. So if there's something through your experience that you think would be helpful to new commissioners, that feedback would be much appreciated. Our hope then at a staff level is once we do this practice run and get your feedback, that we polish it up a bit and the presentation would then be ready to share with new commissioners when they come on early in April. So with that, um...
Sorry, Julie, would you like comments as you go or save them?
You know, whatever I think works best for you. You do, you do have a copy at your seat of the PowerPoint if you'd prefer to write notes and hand those back to us after the meeting if there are questions that you have in the moment. You know, I'm flexible. Whatever works best for you guys. So we do have this training curriculum broken down into five sections. We'll cover the role of the planning commission, the legal aspect of commissioners' roles, city code, regulations and policies, meeting procedures, and then application review. So I can get this to work. First off, role of the planning commission. So starting off with an organizational chart, as you're well aware, there, we have a city council that consists of a mayor and four council members, all equal votes. City manager, Mr. Getchow, reports, of course, directly to the city council. And then you can see the city departments broken up in this slide underneath the city manager. Now, the community development department, public works department, and parks and recreation have been called out specifically because those are the staff members that you will routinely see at the planning commission meetings with the staff that is present. Of course, we also have administration, police, and fire that are represented in the overall city organization. The relationship between the commissions and the city council is that the commissions are all advisory commissions. So as you can see from this slide, the commissions advise the council on decisions. The council in turn may delegate issues or items for review out to those advisory commissions. We have six, if I'm counting right, commissions here in the city that all have a staff liaison that works directly with them from the staff perspective. The city council, you know, can delegate items back to review for the commissions, down to staff, and then the staff through the individual city departments work with the advisory boards in order to meet the expectations and answer the questions that the city council might have for those commissions. The planning commission is made up of anywhere from seven to nine members. Currently, we have nine members. The typical term is three years, and I say typical because sometimes if, say, a commissioner resigns partway through their term, somebody might be appointed to fill out the remainder of that person's term. And the council does look to appoint commissioners with varying backgrounds and experiences so that there's a well-rounded representation on the commission regarding all of the different areas of impact and interest that the planning commission is charged with providing feedback to the council on. So you can see some of those are highlighted here, anywhere from heritage preservation to environment, public safety, architecture, housing, all of those types of backgrounds. The, as I stated earlier, the role of the commission is really to serve as the city's planning advisory board. The planning commission also serves as the board of adjustment and appeals. And what that really means is that if the city receives a variance application, the planning commission has the authority to grant that decision. That decision does not have to go up to the city council for their review and approval. Other communities, for instance, I used to work in a community where the planning commission and the board of adjustment and appeals were composed of the same people. However, they began the meeting as the board of adjustment and appeals did their business, closed that meeting, and then opened another meeting as the planning commission. It's a much more streamlined process here, and the code makes it clear that the planning commission can make those decisions as the final authority. The council, or the commission rather, as I said, advises the council on items that are brought forward to the commission. Largely, that means development application reviews, and we'll get into more detail on the specifics of those. But it may also be an area of interest that the council wants further research on, or it may be a part of the comprehensive plan review process. So the responsibilities are wide-ranging. As planning commission, the primary role is to assess whether or not a project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. You'll see that term come up multiple times through this presentation because it is such a vital and important part of what the commission does. The comprehensive plan, as you know, because having just been that, through that process, is essentially the blueprint for the city that outlines where the city wants to go in the future, sets those policies with regard to land use, transportation, housing, parks, all of the areas where the city has the authority to make decisions and should be making those decisions. As a part of the planning commission's process as well, you consider resident comments. You take public testimony through the public hearing process. So if an application requires a public hearing, residents have the opportunity to come in and share their items of support or questions of concern with the commission in order to engage in that community discussion process. Also, the commission has to take a look at how does the project have an impact on the surrounding land uses, the utilities, the infrastructure, the neighborhood, the livability of the area? And then also taking a look at how does it comply with the zoning standards and design guidelines? And we'll talk about that a little bit more as we get further on into the presentation. So this section of the presentation talks about legal. It is largely just a review because the, any new incoming planning commission members will always have their legal training with the city attorney as well. So we just included this as a little bit of a refresher section. So the federal and state constitutions do grant police powers to the city, and that includes land use regulation in order to address well-being, the health and well-being of a community. Of course, any local regulations must comply with all federal and state laws. But state statute does allow the city to adopt a comprehensive plan to implement zoning on properties, to subdivide properties, to grant variances from certain regulations. So all of those powers are granted at the local level so that the planning commission and city council can work toward the goals identified in the comprehensive plan. In addition, the city works with other regulators that might impact a particular project. So from a state agency perspective, we've got the Minnesota Department of Transportation, the Department of Natural Resources, the State Historic Preservation Office, the Pollution Control Agency. Others might include the Regional Metropolitan Council. Kind of working our way down the ladder, there's also Hanupin County, and the city of Eden Prairie has three different watershed districts included within our boundary. So there's also coordination with all of these or some of these agencies as appropriate depending on the development project. So this slide talks about the pyramid of discretion and public participation through the planning commission and public review process. So as you can see, at the bottom of that pyramid is the legislative authority, and that's identified largely as comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. That's the level at which the communities create those policies and documents. That's where the city has the most discretion, and it also has the most public participation. As we make our way up that pyramid, you can see moving into that yellow section, the creation or application of subdivision requirements, conditional use permits, and variances rely upon the information in the zoning and the comprehensive plan. And there is some public participation, as you know, through PUD review and things of that sort. Then when we get up to the top of that pyramid, that's really where staff administers the rules and regulations that are in place, and there's less public participation through that process. If any of you have come in and pulled a building permit for your deck, you know that those don't come before the planning commission, and council staff has the authority to review those for compliance with all appropriate regulations, and those can be granted administratively. The 60-day rule is another important element of what the planning commission really should be aware of as a part of a public process. So once an application, a land use application, is submitted to the city, the, there's a whole statutory process that starts. So an application is submitted, and the city has 15 business days to review that application and determine if it's complete. If the application is complete, then the city has 60 days to review and make a decision. The city also has the opportunity to extend that 60 days to another 60 days for a total of 120-day review. So within that 120-day calendar review period is when the planning commission has to review the application, the city council has to review it, and then final approval through usually the form of a development agreement. Now, if the application comes in and it's not complete, what happens is the application review is provided back to the applicant in the form of a communication letting them know, these are the incomplete items that you have not provided. And in addition, we've taken the time to look at the application and provide any substantive comments. You know, maybe they've given us an architectural plan, but it doesn't quite meet city standards. So we advise them, these are the revisions you'll need to make in order to comply with the code so that once we do get into a complete process, those items are addressed and we can focus on the public portion of that process. Now, if the city were to deny an application, there do need to be written findings of fact in order to satisfy, you know, legal concerns and also to, in case there was any legal action, that's what the courts would be looking for, and we'll talk about that a little bit more as well. The one piece that I want to identify specifically for you is if that 120-day timeframe lapses and the city has not issued a determination or a decision, the application is automatically approved. So you'll see always on the cover of your staff reports here at the planning commission level, there's a timeline that says the 120-day review period ends on this date. From a staff perspective, we're continually monitoring that to make sure we can, based on the schedule that we have for planning commission and council meetings, that we can get folks through in 120 days. Sometimes, based on the complexity of the project or site-specific issues, the applicant will grant an extension to that 120 days, because we're getting close, but we're not quite there yet. Anything beyond the 120 days, the applicant does have to grant. The city does not have the authority to extend beyond that 120. But we do find that as long as there's been, you know, forward progress and there's just a few little items kind of needing to be wrapped up through a development agreement or something of that sort, the development team is usually very agreeable to extending that 120-day review period.
Can I butt in?
Absolutely.
On the last bullet point about the denials requiring written findings from the city, is there any reason why we need to do a deeper dive on that to say findings from the city council on development applications or findings from the planning commission for variances? Or, because it can be either the council that denies or the planning commission. And curious if we should tell new commissioners, if the council uses our findings, because on development applications, we can say no, but it still goes to council.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that's a very good point. So in the case of a variance, which is, as I talked about earlier, reviewed and a decision made by the planning commission, if staff were to ever be recommending denial or the planning commission was headed in that direction as a result of your conversation, yes, there would have to be findings of fact provided for denial. In the case of a recommendation, say on a zoning change or a subdivision, if the recommendation was for denial at the planning commission level, absolutely, we'd be looking for specified reasons as to supporting that denial, carrying that forward to council. As you know, that is a very atypical situation because there is a lot of work that goes into the project before it even gets to you, and we'll talk about that in a different section. Largely, we get to the point where everybody is at an agreement as to what that project needs to look like in order to comply with city expectations. But in that, if that event were to surface, that is how it would be, need to be addressed. And just a slide reminding you about ethical behavior, because no presentation would be complete without that. Respectful behavior, the city attorney will go over with you about conflict of interest and gifts and not being able to accept gifts from anybody that is seeking approvals from the city, of course. So again, just a gentle reminder. So getting into regulations, city code, and policies, of course, the star of the show is always the comprehensive plan, as you know, just going through that process. It is, as I said earlier, the blueprint for the city, and it does generally span a timeframe of anywhere from 10 to 30 years. 20 is usually kind of the mid-road. All cities within the seven-county metro area are required by state statute to update their comprehen, comprehensive plans every 10 years. So the plan that we just went through with Aspire 2040, probably about eight years from now, we'll be kicking off that process all over again in order to comply with our statutory requirements. Outstate communities, you know, as you get farther out, don't have that requirement. They certainly can do comprehensive plans, and many of them do, but they don't have that timeline, much like metro communities do. City ordinances and zoning, of course, are required to comply with the comprehensive plan. So every time we have a zoning change or a subdivision project before you, that's the first criteria we look at, is what is proposed compliant with the city code. If it's not, or excuse me, the comprehensive plan. If it's not, staff recommends a rezoning to the appropriate zoning district that is consistent with the land use designation. The comprehensive plan, so Aspire 2040 is our current document, that can be amended, even though it is a 20-year plan and has a life of 10 years before it needs to be amended. Obviously, there, it's a living document, so there will be a need to change it. As you know, we've already, at the planning commission level, reviewed our first amendment with the property down on Eden Prairie Road that was seeking a regiding and some MUSA extension to that property. So there will be amendments during that 10-year shelf life, if you will, of that plan, and we would obviously be tracking those, and they will also require review by the city council and the metropolitan council as a part of the regional policies. So as I said, the zoning must comply with the comprehensive plan. So you can see on this screen the objectives. It's really to support or implement the comp plan, to support harmonious land uses within our community so that it provides for stability among the existing land uses, appropriate use of public and private lands, protects property values. It also can ensure appropriate traffic circulation and traffic patterns, if you will. Now, the zoning regulations, that all of those things are achieved through the zoning ordinance, which is chapter 11. You're all very familiar with that. That's what you guys work with day in and day out doing your work. But also, portions of the regulations that are included in the zoning ordinance include shoreline regulations and wetland and floodplain regulations, also land alteration, tree preservation, sign regulations, stormwater. So some of those specific requirements or regulations address more of the items that are reviewed at an administrative level, you know, through issuing of a signed permit. Others of them, like the floodplain, shoreline, wetland, might surface up to a certain degree during your project review, but then there's also staff review at our, at our level as well. Different chapter in the city code is the subdivision ordinance. That talks about the requirements that are put in place in order to subdivide property. Now, there has been some changes to that over the past, I'm going to say, five years in order to help kind of streamline that process a little bit. I think subdivision can mean a lot of things to a lot of people. Traditionally, I think we think of a large development, say 50 acres, and it's being split up into, you know, 150, 200, single-family lots. But it can also mean a lot line adjustment. You want to acquire a little bit of property from your neighbor and you need to shimmy that lot line over? That's also a subdivision process. You own two lots and you want to combine them into one? That's also a subdivision process. Some of those don't require the same level of public process as what the planning commission typically works with, but those processes do exist as well. So as you can see on this slide, the preliminary plats are what really come before the planning commission and city council. Minor subdivisions can go directly to the city council. Those are usually very minor in nature and very consistent with the surrounding environment. The lot line adjustments, lot combinations, and subdivisions can be handled at an administrative level. Design guidelines. Those of you who have been on the commission for a couple of years are familiar with this process. In late 2016, the city adopted design guidelines intended to address citywide. Prior to that, we did have design guidelines for the town center to address the major center area, study right around Bolero, Redstone Mall area. But in 2016, the decision was made to adopt design guidelines that impact the entire city. Now, these are not code requirements. As a part of that process, this, the council and commission did identify those items that were of primary importance, and there were some code amendments done as well to make sure those that were kind of the priority were identified as requirements through the zoning ordinance, so everybody has to meet those. But the design guidelines document is really intended to be a menu of options in order to communicate to a developer or development team what the city's expectations are. And as we move on through this presentation and start talking about PUDs, the design guidelines are really most beneficial, not only when folks are looking at architectural design and site design, but also through a PUD process where they might be seeking some relief from certain performance standards, but they might be able to meet and exceed other standards. The design guidelines also talk about kind of, I don't want to, want to pick the right word here, priorities or initiatives that the city might have with regard to sustainability and public art. So it provides some guidance as to what the city is looking for, if those are the types of elements that are appropriate in a development process, project that's coming forward. Any questions on design guidelines?
I have a question. Is, is there any sort of schedule by which this is reviewed, like, every 10 years or so? I don't know if there, that initially was proposed when it was created to have it, you know, revisited at all?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, there wasn't a specific schedule. As I said, we're, right now, we're basically right at three years because it was approved in December of 2016. So it's about a three-year-old document. I think even though there wasn't a specific schedule identified that put on our work plans that we will revisit this in 2024, or, you know, pick, pick a year, it is always staff, staff is always mindful of changes in trends, changes within the community. So as needs arise, we're always keeping an eye on that, and we would certainly bring that forward. But that could be something that, at the end of the year, when staff brings forward the work plan, if, over the course of the year, the commission has really seen a change in a certain aspect of the design guidelines, that's certainly something we could take a look at in the work plan in order to kind of set out a schedule.
Yeah, I think that's the appropriate place to bring it up, is in the work plan, and hopefully, on your end, you can, you know, be tracking. I would, I would, I think, just as a suggestion, a good idea is to have a thorough look-through every 10 years. And in that, maybe even as part of that look-through, go back on the previous 10 years of, of projects and identify where are people deviating from that? And you might find patterns. Everybody, nobody's ever meeting this, or they're always doing that. Is that informing maybe how things should be changing?
Mr. Chairman, as commission, I completely agree with that assessment. I mean, that's something we're always keeping an eye on with regard to zoning regulations as well. As you know, we just had a code amendment come through the commission for the R195 side yard setbacks. So that, again, is in response to kind of keeping our finger on the pulse of what's going on, how the community is evolving over time, and how can we better suit our customers? So noted. Meeting procedures. This is the scariest section of this presentation, if you ask me, because this next, the first slide isn't quite so scary, but the next one is. This one just kind of sets out what your schedule is. You generally meet the second and fourth Monday of the month at 7:00. Here at city center, you do have open meeting law regulations, or you are governed by that. So we televise those meetings. They are always open to the public. You may also, as a commission, be invited, as you well know and have all done, participate in council work sessions. That was something that the commission was heavily involved in through the design guidelines effort as well as the comprehensive plan effort. So there may be additional meetings that you're asked to attend. Oh, not this, this one isn't scary, but it's the next one. So Robert's Rules of Order is an etiquette and a standard that all of the advisory commissions here in Eden Prairie use in order to ensure a fair and equitable process, provide consistency. Many organizations use Robert's Rules of Order. And, you know, it, it just kind of sets the tone for the, for the meeting. As you can see, it basic, this slide basically follows the order of what is provided for items of discussion on your agenda. A quorum is required in order to hold a meeting. In this case, the planning commission has nine members. So with nine seated members, a quorum is five people. If the size of the commission were adjusted down to, say, seven members for whatever reason, then the quorum becomes four. So that is a variable, variable number. So thank you all for being here this evening, because we're right at five.
Julie, just a question.
Yes.
Is there somewhere where you should mention that not to discuss things outside a meeting with more than two members?
That would be the open meeting law, and that...
You can mention it there?
Oops. Let's get back where I need to be. So open meeting law, that, that is a good point. That is something that, as we're discussing with new members, additional time should be paid to that, even though it is covered by the city attorney in their presentation.
Okay.
Yep.
And then maybe about the, that you can abstain, you don't have to abstain for minutes because you have an opportunity to watch the video.
Right. Very good. Thank you. So this slide, we talk about making a motion. There's a lot of words on this slide. It makes it look like it's a lot harder than it is. To new commissioners, I would recommend that they watch, because all of our meetings are on the city's website, watch a meeting, see how it goes. It's very conversational. It flows in the meeting and is not necessarily as rigid. is not necessarily as rigid as, as this language makes it out to be. In addition, the chairs that I've worked with in the past are always, you know, prompting, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? So they're guiding commissioners through that process. So it, it shouldn't be intimidating to new members, but we do want to provide this background about what is the appropriate language, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair. I'd like to move that we adopt the, adopt the minutes from, or approve the minutes from the previous meeting or approve the agenda. So it, it just provides some background for incoming members as to what they might expect for that process.
Madam City Planner, how should we address you?
I'm just fine being called by my first name. You know, it is, I've seen a lot of different things done, being called by Ms. Kleema, Julie, either one. Nothing's going to really bother me as long as you're kind. So.
Julie?
Yes.
Sorry. Queeg, especially for my benefit, as vice chair and Andrews as well, when we get to the end of an action item and we start to have motions.
Yes.
Okay. And someone may make a motion with an amendment to just what's written in the staff report, let's say. And so I want to make sure that when I'm chairman anyway, I know that, do I have to wait to give the person who wants to second the motion the floor? Or can they just, a lot of times, we just casually, I'll second that, we just jump on it right away. And, and I don't know if we should be giving the chairman more respect to say, may I second the motion, Mr. Chairman? And then off the chair, offer discussion before the second and/or after the second, before the vote.
Okay. There's a lot of questions in there, so I'm going to try and, try and answer to the best of my ability. If I miss anything, please let me know and I'll circle back. So in the case of a commissioner making a motion, and then either if that commissioner has a new bright idea and wants to amend their motion, or if another commissioner offers some new insight and said, well, I agree with that, but I'd like to amend your motion to say X. That amendment can be handled by the original motion maker sa, simply saying, I agree. If that original motion maker does not agree, then the commission as a whole needs to vote on that amendment. Now, at any point during that time, the chair can reprise control, if you will, and be calling for those in order to establish a clear process of what is being asked and what is being voted on in order to promote clarity and make sure none of the commissioners are kind of misunderstanding where they're at in the process. Because I have seen that happen where if the chair is not kind of inserting themselves and repeating, here's where we're at, this is what we're voting on, after the fact, sometimes a commissioner may say, ooh, geez, that's not what I thought we were actually taking action on. So it's always good for the chair to summarize and repeat, in my personal opinion and based on my experience. Does that answer all of your questions?
I believe it does.
Okay. If not, you can-
Thank you.
You know what my email address is. So as I just covered here, you can amend a motion. That can be suggested by any member. You can also withdraw motions. So if an original motion maker makes a motion and, you know, here, the technical rule say, you know, before the chairperson repeats the motion, either before or after it's seconded, as Commissioner Farr mentioned, there are rules in Robert's Rules of Order. I've always known, all of the planning commissions I've worked with in my career, to be very casual and conversational in order to make sure the record is clear and that people are making motions that the commission understands as a whole. So I don't want new commissioners to be too intimidated by this language, but I do think it provides a good background as to managing expectations. And then the chair will always call for the vote, asking, you know, those in favor say aye, those opposed, nay. We have started asking the chairs to call for any abstentions, just because when people are kind of voting in a group, sometimes it's hard to pick out those who might have a quieter voice or are turned away from their microphone. So it just provides clarity to the whole process and it's helpful for the recorder as well as for staff.
A quick question. This is just out of curiosity, I guess. Why would one abstain? One reason I can think of is if there's some conflict of interest, but there's other, is there other reasons that one might, just because they, they politically or whatever, might not want to take a stance either one way or another on a certain motion?
During my career, I've seen people abstain because maybe they have a financial conflict of interest because they used to do work for, or currently do work for that company, whether it's an architecture firm or a developer or whoever. Others, commissioners may choose to abstain sometimes if it is a property or a project that is close to their neighborhood or maybe the variance request is their neighbor. And they'll choose to, if there's a quorum where there's enough bodies available in order to have an active and fair conversation, somebody may choose to abstain just because of those types of situations.
Is there a preference, if there's a conflict, to attend and abstain or to not attend at all?
So that can be handled a variety of different ways. So, and I've seen it handled a variety of different ways. So if a commissioner is abstaining, yeah, for whatever reason, they should also abstain from the conversation. Because of course, if you participate in the conversation, you're influencing the discussion, you're influencing the outcome. So then to just simply not vote at the tail end of the whole process, you know, raises some questions about the equitable portion of it. I've even seen where some commissioners will attend the meeting because there might be multiple issues on the agenda. They just recuse themselves for the item that they're connected to. Sometimes they, you know, recuse themselves and go sit in the audience or in the hallway. So it's clear that they're not participating in the conversation. They're not a part of it at all. Sometimes they just remain at their seat, say, at the beginning of the item. I'm, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, I'm going to abstain on this discussion. And then they just sit quietly and politely through the, the discussion and wait for the next item. So anything is appropriate at a staff level, we do ask that you inform us if you're going to not attend a meeting or choose to abstain. That's helpful to us to know. Sometimes people have an understanding of what conflict of interest is that doesn't necessarily match up with what the legal definition of conflict of interest is. So it's helpful to staff, helpful to you.
It's probably helpful to expand on that conversation under that part in the slide.
For the training.
And I think that will be covered at the legal portion of the training as well,
but it's always good to revisit that because that is probably one of the issues that might come up with more frequency to individual members. And there's a lot of information in that legal training.
And I think they talk about the overall conflict, but I don't remember them talking about the mechanics of.
Yeah.
The rules of conduct with respect to the perceived conflict of interest.
Yep. Very good. Good feedback. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then circling back to findings of fact. So making sure that findings of fact are valid. Now, you will always have staff to guide you through that process. So valid findings of fact, you can see again, there's a term of consistency with the guide plan and the zoning. Also, the use would not detrimentally impact neighboring property owners. Comments submitted through the public process can also be accurate and included in finding as a fact. Invalid findings can be something like economic considerations. I don't like this proposal as much as something we saw six months ago, that, again, circling back to the economic considerations of it, the neighbors don't like the proposal. So say we have a development plan that comes before us, it's consistent with the zoning that is being requested, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan for that area, but there's significant neighborhood concern about that project. That neighborhood concern, in light of those other items, is not a valid finding of fact. There can, may be some things that can be addressed to move toward a compromise, but in light of the fact that the development proposal would be consistent with the comp plan and the zoning, doesn't leave as much room for a denial, if you will. So those findings of fact become particularly important if the city is looking to recommend or deny a project. Because just in the event that it were to end up in court, the court would of course be looking for what are those findings of fact and will provide more deference to the city if we've got that documented through the process. Okay?
Julie?
Yes?
I'm, maybe not directly germane to what we were just talking about, but as time goes on and we begin to develop more of a consciousness about carbon footprints, reducing carbon footprints of commercial projects, do you have a dedicated staff that look at potential grants or in tax incentives for developers that could be factored into the city's review? For example, there's an omnibus bill before Congress, and I think the House has passed it. And one of the provisions is providing tax incentives to builders who use solar or other renewable energy. So I'm wondering, I certainly would appreciate more facts, more specific knowledge about what types of grants and incentives are out there that we could introduce into our discussion when we talk about sustainability or carbon footprint?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, so staff works with a variety of different entities, as you saw earlier in the presentation. We do our very best to keep informed of resources that might be out there to promote the city's initiatives with regard to sustainability. As you know, sustainable Eden Prairie is a significant effort that the city council is leading the city through. As a part of that, that is a, I would say, a different level than a zoning ordinance or a comprehensive plan. Certainly, the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance incentivize and promote that. You'll see through the, as you recall, through the comprehensive plan, there were call-outs through all of the chapters, not just the land use chapter, that talked about sustainability efforts or items that could be implemented in the city in order to increase sustainability. So some of those might be more encouraging, some of those might lend itself to regulatory at some point, sooner rather than later. So there's such a wide range there that you might see some of that find its way into code. But I think what you were talking about more so were financial incentives and whether the city becomes involved in offering financial incentives. You know, that's a city council discussion. If there are other sources, maybe the PCA or the watershed district are offering some programs or rebates of that sort. I know through sustainable Eden Prairie, staff keeps informed of all of those in order to inform residents down to, you know, if they want to replace their furnace, you know, what incentives are available, all the way up to, is there resources available for somebody wanting to install solar panels on a commercial building? So those types of things might not find their way into the zoning ordinance as regulations, but that doesn't mean the city isn't proactively working to communicate and address those. Okay? So the next section that we're going to talk about is actual review of the application. So this is where you guys get involved. And first of all, the types of land use applications that the planning commission tends to review on a more regular basis are site plans. As you know, those are very specific. Those will show you what does the building look like? What does the parking lot look like? What materials are used? What landscaping is used? Subdivisions refers to how the property is divided up or in some cases, combined. Plats, again, another term for subdivisions. A code amendment. Are we looking to amend the zoning ordinance to update, as Commissioner Mehdi talked about, update regulations as, as policies evolves or evolve, excuse me, or trends evolve. A comprehensive plan amendment, we talked about that process as well. Looking at that guiding document and is it still in alignment with what is being proposed on the site or are we farther along in the process and now we have a different vision for that area? Have community goals and policies changed and we need to revise that a little bit. Rezoning of property, planned unit developments and conditional use permits. And we'll talk about each of these in a little more detail. So the planning commission will review all of those different items. And again, the first and foremost thing you're looking for is consistency with the comprehensive plan. And then taking a look at how all of those proposals will impact the properties around them, the neighborhood, the utilities, infrastructure, impacts to water, what performance standards are being reviewed, what are the height of the buildings? Do they meet setbacks? Are the building materials appropriate? And then through that process, you also hear public comment through the public hearing process.
Sorry, Julie?
Yeah?
Could you go back to that slide?
Absolutely.
So I, I think we may need to address just the, the whole time planning and mechanics of how to review an application. Because I think that's probably the first daunting task from someone if they first join, is that what is my time commitment? How do I establish the time commitment and what else should I do to prepare? So I think it, it might be nice if we talked about, you know, things, a little checklist maybe that you may want to do depending upon an application, you know, visit the site, review the staff report, look at the drawings, the reports that are with, with the application materials. And, you know, when we get our packet from you on Wednesday night or Thursday, whenever that is, you know, the first thing I would look through is the agenda to find out how many items are on the agenda so I can do my time planning between Thursday and Monday.
Yep.
And I think that's an important step for people to know what that time commitment could be if they plan on doing all this in three days. If it's not just to come home early for dinner on Monday night and, you know.
Great comment.
Yeah, it is.
Great comment.
I think that's an excellent comment. When I first joined the commission, that was so different than the heritage preservation commission activity. You know, it's so, so much more to absorb and to try to get, you know, comfortable with and learn all that.
Julie, as far as the site plans themselves, I mean, we've had rather unwieldy and very large, oversized plans to review. Is there any way that they can be reduced to a link online so we don't have to waste all that paper?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, we are, as a city, looking at electronic plan review. We're not quite there yet because there will be some investment, of course, with software and things of that sort. Once that happens, you know, we'll have to figure out what that means for a planning commission review. Now, when you, as a commission, review the applications, you get the full-size plan sets. When they move to the city council, city council gets 11 by 17 plan sets. And now, the feedback that I've received in the time that I work here is that the commission really needs those full-size plan sets in order to get into the details and understand what's being proposed so that they can do their part, if you will, in helping inform the council of, we've looked at all of these things. We understand what the project is proposing. We have had an opportunity to look at all of those details. But I certainly understand where you're coming from. And even at a staff level, we are working to minimize, you know, when, when I first came to the city, we required many more paper plan sets than we do now. We've pared that down in order to, you know, be more sustainable in our, in our use. So, so we're getting there. I don't have all the answers right now, but we're getting closer. So stay tuned.
Julie, I'll add my comment that I agree with. I, I, you know, if we're taking a vote, I'd prefer electronic as well. And then I also just want to second Ed's comment too. I think that's a good idea to have some snippet about, here's kind of the process that, a recommended process to review.
Yep.
And then one of them, and I, you kind of rattled some off, but I'd add, you know, to, you know, reviewing in extra or closer detail, you know, the variances or whatever it might be, that sort of what's contained in the conditions. Because I was saying, that's a, you know, that's kind of the main thing. That's, those are the things that are, maybe aren't complying and that are the hot topics. And then one other, I think this is might in your slide here on what, what to look for. Even before we begun this conversation, I kind of had an idea of, you know, it'd be helpful to kind of understand what not, what doesn't fall under our umbrella. And I'm really trying to think of a really good example, and I know there aren't a ton, but just things that are like, you're not here to, to do that. That is either the city engineer's job or that might be the city council's job. But, you know, maybe some key examples of like, you know, don't spend too much time going there and that's not really your job to be doing that. And, and, you know, I think this list of what we are looking at is good. But I have that recommendation, but I really couldn't even think of any good examples because there is a fuzzy line with almost all of it. So.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I think that Commissioner Mehdi, that's another very valid point. So as an example, for instance, the city council tends to deal with financial implications. They're not necessarily looking for the planning commission or other advisory boards to weigh in on that. And staff will usually communicate that if that's a talking point through the project, that, you know, we're not looking for the commission, as an example, to weigh in on that particular issue, but we want you to be informed of it so that you understand the broader scope of the project. But we're not necessarily looking for feedback. But I think that that is a very valid point and we can certainly incorporate something of that sort. But I think that that is a very valid point and we can certainly incorporate something of that sort.
I think that is a good point. And maybe you could flip the development review approval process slide after land use applications. You kind of touching some of those points.
Yep.
Go through the process and then say, okay, now when it's at Planning Commission, what do you look for? Maybe you can mention some of those points you just said.
Okay.
Just flip the two slides, maybe. And then also, I appreciate Commissioner Farr's point as well. I don't know if it's an expectation that you're supposed to go visit. And I don't know if you can set that expectation, but maybe you could mention that current members and prior members think you should. As part of it, I don't know, is it?
Oh, I definitely think so.
Yeah, I think there's something I kind of stress.
I missed that for a while when I first got on.
Yeah, that you should go and see what, you know, how these are impacting the community because neighbors will be there here.
Right, absolutely. We can certainly communicate that as well. I think that's a very good add.
And what would the protocol be if we are to visit a proposed subdivision and we see neighbors and they see us and we're obviously not members of that immediate community? What would be appropriate for, how should we respond to their inquiries about our presence there?
Mr. Chair members of the Commission, you know, I wouldn't expect that you're trespassing on this site. You're probably, you know, walking on the sidewalk or driving down the road. But if you are approached by neighbors, which may happen, particularly if it's a project of specific interest, i.e. controversy, you know, folks are keeping an eye on things a little bit more in the neighborhood at that point. You know, it's completely appropriate for, you know, you to identify yourself as a Planning Commission member. At that point, if you are coming out there because it's on your agenda, they've already received a public hearing notice so they know there's a meeting that's coming up. So you can just let them know that you're out there informing yourself, reviewing for yourself prior to the conversation because you want to have a broad understanding and be able to take in their comments or comments of others as they might be shared during the process.
I've been approached before and people have appreciated that I was out there looking at it.
And Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would think if someone starts going on about what they think about the proposed project, the proper response might be, I suggest you attend the public hearing and, you know, state that to the commission so we can take that into consideration and kind of not try to engage in the conversation.
Mr. Chair members of the Commission, absolutely, that's the right approach. Because of course, your role as a commissioner is to not make a decision until you have all of the information. And you won't have all of the information until the public process plays out. So while they may feel inclined to share information with you, encouraging them to share that in the public realm is where you can really take that into account. Okay.
Can I just do one more comment on what we've been talking about, on kind of what to look for and what not to look for and topics that are germane for our meeting? Coming from a position of dealing with plans and specs all the time, I know that our application materials are very heavy on civil design upfront. And so about two-thirds of the drawings that we get are very detail-oriented grading plan, utility plan, stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWIP. And that's the first, like, 15 sheets in a set, and it can be overwhelming. And I've been guilty a number of too many times of really doing a deep dive on some of the things that I know that the engineering department is taking care of. But I end up talking about it and it's probably not germane, and so I have to dial myself back. But there are important drawings that we should focus on, the site plan and other drawings, not to ignore the civil engineering plans, but most people aren't skilled in learning how to read a complete set of civil engineering plans, and that's okay. And again, just the point of which that most of our submittal package paperwork are documents that are difficult for most planning commissioners to understand how to read, and they really don't need to anyway.
Right. Very, Mr. Chair members of the Commission, I very much agree. I think a slide that combines the comments made by both Commissioner Mehdi and Farr, or maybe two slides to identify where should you be looking? Because there are times when, throughout my career, I've seen new commissioners come on board and they, as new commissioners, not bringing any prior experience, they don't really understand that staff's already been through all of these documents. Those documents have been revised maybe multiple times in order to either meet standards or come closer to that. So, you know, the input that we are looking for from the commission isn't for a re-review of the engineering plans or the signed package. We're looking for, as an Eden Prairie resident, based on your expertise, how does this impact your community? How does this further the comprehensive plan? The details, you know, staff is certainly well-equipped and able to handle. So I like that comment. I think that would be very helpful to a commissioner because I agree with you, if somebody got a, you know, 20-page plan set and they, you know, get into those very, very detailed items, it could almost scare them away from their volunteerism.
Right.
So, and we don't want to do that. Okay. Okay. So this is a slide that talks about the development review and approval process. So as you can see, out of these 11 steps that we've identified, there's a fair amount of work that goes into a project long before it gets to the Planning Commission. So we talked earlier a little bit about that 60-day rule. And once an application comes in, staff reviews it. Many times, an incomplete letter is provided because there are items that need to be revised or additional information that needs to be provided. So there might be several iterations of plans that have been reviewed by staff. All of those pages have been reviewed by staff prior to it being scheduled at Planning Commission. But where it really starts is somebody has an idea for a project and they come in and meet with city staff. Now, prior to it becoming an actual application, they might meet with staff, depending on the complexity of the project, anywhere from one or two to numerous times in order to refine that plan. You know, as I said, depending on the complexity, sometimes we'll meet with a developer maybe two or three times before they submit the complete application. On a significant project, like take a Castle Ridge or a Paravell, we might work with them for nine months, a year, before they even get to an actual application. So they will come in with an idea to staff. They'll give us a concept plan or item to review. We will review that at our Development Review Committee that meets internally every week. And it's comprised of planning, building, parks, engineering, assessing, economic development, fire, police, whoever, you know, all of the players that need to be reviewing those items are at the table every week. And we're working through those issues and getting comment back to the developer, trying to streamline that process so that by the time they get in front of you, we're not talking about code compliant issues or will this stormwater really work? We're focusing on the public process and those items that require review and approval and recommendation from the Planning Commission and the City Council. So as you can see, where they'd meet with the departments here at the city, we do not enforce, of course, the DNR or SHPO or MPCA regulations, but we do alert developers to, you will have to comply with these as well. You need to meet with the watershed district. We don't want to speak for the watershed district, but we do have some knowledge that we can share with developers about you'll want to be in contact with them. Here's how their process works because their process is independent of ours. So we're providing that kind of guidance, if you will, early on in the project. There might also be an informational or a neighborhood meeting. We always encourage developers to hold those with the neighborhood prior to the neighborhood receiving a public hearing notice because it's their opportunity to get out and hear what the neighborhood has to say, maybe refine their plan. If they, the neighbors have some really great ideas that they can address in the plan, we always encourage them to do that. That helps streamline the public process as well. And then, as you can see, moving from item five down through 11, that is the process where the application comes in, staff reviews it. If it's appropriate for other commissions to review it, say, it's a historic property and the HPC or Historic Preservation Commission needs to review it before it gets to you, that is scheduled before it comes to you. You'll review it, make your recommendation. It moves to the City Council for their public hearing where the residents have an opportunity to come in and share their comments again. And then if it is a comp plan amendment, it would be sent off to the Met Council for their review. And then if the City Council at their first reading approves the plan, then they direct, in most cases, staff to prepare a development agreement, which is essentially a contract between the developer and the city. And we work through that, and that is what gets approved at the final approval or second reading of the project. Variances, so as we talked about earlier, Planning Commission has the authority to grant a variance. And we'll talk about in the next slides how variances are different from waivers. But a variance is an exception to the zoning ordinance that would allow something to be altered in a way that would not otherwise be allowed. Probably the most common example would be a setback variance. If you have a front yard setback of 30 feet, but a developer might, or a property owner might say, I want to build my home at 25 feet, do they have valid reasons for that? Is there something unique about their property, topography, shape of the lot? Are they trying to save a heritage tree as a part of that, you know? There are very specific findings that are identified in state statute that need to be met. They need to show practical difficulty, that the site can't be put to a reasonable use. And the difficulty is a unique circumstance, not caused by the owner. Economic considerations, again, are not a valid reason for granting a variance. And findings of fact are provided as a part of those statutory criteria. And you'll see those outlined in your staff reports as variances come forward to you. A variance does run with the land. So if a variance is granted for a property and that, and it is utilized within a year of its approval, that variance remains in force and effect if that property is sold or changes hands. So it does run with the property. It's not specific to that development project or that property owner. Okay.
I'm kind of graphically oriented.
Yeah.
The pictures on this slide and going forward over the next few slides, instead of pretty pictures of buildings, could you put an example, like from a, in this case, variance, maybe a site plan variance graphic showing a setback line and an encroachment so that people understand what that looks like on paper?
Absolutely. Good comment. Thank you. So then in response to variances, the other side of that is a waiver through a PUD process. And you're all familiar with those as being seated commissioners for quite some time. A PUD is a mechanism that allows flexibility or master planning of a, typically, it's a larger project area. Sometimes it's not. Some communities do have minimum sizes to their PUDs. In Eden Prairie, we used to, I guess a long time ago, have a minimum size requirement for our PUDs. Now, it is allowed in any zoning district and does not have that size requirement. But the PUD, as I said, is really put in place in order to promote flexibility and creativity within a development project. And you'll see waiver requests as a part of those development proposals. So there might be some standards that the developer is asking for some relief on because it's very challenging to meet that code requirement. But there are other code requirements where they can meet and exceed those regulations that are outlined in code. So it's taking a look rather than, in the case of a variance, where we might be looking at just a singular setback along a singular property line. In the case of a PUD, we're looking at the entire project area and not looking at things in silos or in isolation. So findings for a PUD approval, of course, here we are again, looking for consistency with the comprehensive plan, looking at the overall impact of the project. And again, being justified by the design of the development and meeting or exceeding standards in other areas. And that's where that Design Guidelines tool that we talked about earlier really is a helpful document to development teams. They can take a look at that and understand exactly what the city's trying to achieve in other areas. Any questions on waivers versus variances? So again, just to recap, waivers do not have to meet the practical difficulties test. You may see multiple waivers, as you well know, through a development project. Planning Commission and council review those as a part of the PUD process. And they are documented in the zoning, excuse me, development agreement and the zoning ordinance that approves a project. Variances have to meet reasonable use, unique circumstances, and maintaining essential character. So there are very, very defined issues that need to be addressed through granting a variance. And the Planning Commission is the decision maker, so there's different process.
Is it safe to say that on waivers, Planning Commission makes a recommendation to City Council?
That's a good catch, yes.
Which can or cannot be taken?
Pardon me?
Which can or cannot be accepted?
Conditional use permits. Conditional use permits are utilized in a lesser fashion in Eden Prairie than they are in many other communities. Really, the only items that are appropriate or handled through a conditional use permit are historic properties and small cell towers in public right-of-way adjacent to R1 zoning districts. Permits, a conditional use permit permits a use in a zoning district so long as specific requirements are met. So as through that permit, there are specific conditions attached to a conditional use permit that have to be satisfied by the development. And again, the Planning Commission is the decision maker. It is very infrequent that a conditional use permit has been reviewed by the Planning Commission because, of course, it has very limited palette here in Eden Prairie.
So I might understand, then, that, say, a property like the Smith Douglas Moore House, the Historical Preservation Commission may review some type of application for modification, but the Planning Commission is the final arbiter and the final authority on the CUP?
There is, if there is a conditional, there, let me back up. On the Smith Douglas Moore House, for instance, there is a conditional use permit that has been issued for that property. So that site is being utilized consistent with the conditional use permit. If there was a proposal to change how that property is used or expand an approval that's already granted by the conditional use permit, I would expect that the HPC would weigh in on that and would review it. And then that conditional use permit would come forward to the Planning Commission for review.
So it's the Planning Commission that makes the final?
Yeah, would be the final.
You know, and I'm going to have to double-check this slide because I thought that the last time we did a historic property conditional use permit, I thought it ended up going to the council. So I'm going to have to double-check this one just to make sure.
Yeah.
Because I'm pretty sure the mayor's signature, previous mayor's signature, is on the last one I looked at. So again, I think that that would be an advisory, but we'll confirm that before this is, this is shared with the new members. And then life after a project being reviewed by the Planning Commission. As I said, the City Council will review it if appropriate, the Met Council. A development agreement will be drafted and signed by the city and the development team. That development agreement gets recorded at the county. So it follows the legal descriptions that were created through that process so that anybody can go to the county, pull that up, and see what the requirements of that property are. Following that, the property's platted, easements are obtained, building permit plans come in, land alteration permit plans come in. Those are reviewed and approved for consistency with the development agreement and other appropriate regulations. And construction commences after that. Once construction is well on its way, there is also landscaping that's installed. We do take a landscape surety for projects. So the city holds that surety for one year or two growing seasons, depending on the time of installation. And we're reviewing those plans to make sure they're consistent. There can be some minor modifications with the approved landscape plans. Say, you know, maple trees were shown on the plan, but by the time they get to install them, there's no availability of maple trees. So they can work with staff to swap something similar out without having to come back through to the commission. But we do hold that surety until the plan is implemented and then that surety is returned to the developer. And they receive a certificate of occupancy, usually ahead of that surety being returned.
At the front end of that list, we really don't have a deliverable, per se, out of the commission, but we do leave behind minutes that get read by the City Council and the online video of our meetings that gets reviewed by the public, as well as the City Council members. Should we remind new commissioners that, in fact, those records are left behind for the purpose of helping the City Council come to judgment?
Mr. Chair members of the Commission, I think that's a valid comment. And just for your information, when an application moves forward to the City Council, of course, we do a cover report, much like your staff report that you get. It might be a little bit more of a summary at that point. But we do attach the staff report that you received for the council's review. We do attach the approved or unapproved minutes, whatever the case might be. We do attach the approved or unapproved minutes, whatever the case might be, so they can see that discussion. And I have heard from council members, you know, that they do tune in and maybe don't watch our meetings live, but they might go back and watch them afterwards, too. So I know that they are utilizing those resources, but that's a good point to share with new commissioners. Thank you.
General hypothetical question. How does the legal concept of eminent domain play into our role at the PC? What I'm getting at is, say, Hennepin County or the state of Minnesota decides they need to appropriate a parcel of land that's in an infill area in Eden Prairie, not an existing constructed area. So is that something that is the purview of the City Council and not the PC?
Mr. Chair members of the Commission, I would generally agree with that. In my time working as a planner, I've not seen any Planning Commission weigh in on a public infrastructure project by a regional or county or state agency. That's usually handled either at staff level, city council level, but I've not seen discussion at, other than more informative, at the commission level.
All right.
Any other questions? I appreciate all of your comments throughout the presentation.
I have a couple of comments that I just didn't get while we were going through it. Back, I would say probably on slide five or thereabouts, it talks about the Planning Commission composition, and I think we should add detail that it's made up of seven to nine members, but we have a chair and then a vice chair. And then also, and I don't even know this, so this is a question, but how does the chair and vice chair get elected? Who elects them? And how often does that renew for those positions? And I guess you don't have to get in too much detail in it, but just kind of explaining that, that's, those are roles within the Planning Commission organization.
Mr. Chair members of the Commission, we can certainly add that for this commission's reference. The chair and vice chair are appointed by the City Council annually when they do their appointments for any vacant seats. So they will take a look at, you know, attendance, they will take a look at, you know, how the meetings have been efficiently run and the conversations and things of that sort. They'll take all of that into account, and they appoint that annually.
Another.
Could I add one more thing to that?
Yeah.
It might be helpful just to say, the appointment term is three years, and then talk, you can apply for reappointment, and then talk about that third time. It's unanimous. Maybe it just helps.
Yeah. How many times you can.
Some of those details are invisible.
How many terms you can have.
And the council makes that decision, too. I mean, it used to not be three unanimous for three years, but they put it in to effect a couple of years ago.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that?
Well, I understood that the City Council used to not have a unanimous agreement on a third term, but they changed that sometime back when I was on the HPC, I think I heard about it, or just after that.
Mr. Chair members of the Commission, so I believe it's once a commissioner is up for their third reappointment, they have to be appointed by unanimous decision.
Right, but I thought that that had happened sometime after I started.
That may very well be.
Not on this commission, but on the HPC, I think. I can't quite remember exactly when it was, but.
We can certainly add that. Thank you.
My other comment is kind of across a couple of different slides. The planning terms, which I think is helpful that we didn't really go through, I don't think we need to, but comprehensive plan is in here on the list of terms. I think that should be updated to comprehensive guide plan, and then we should also, either in parentheses or within the description, actually, also known as ASPIRE 2040, because we use that so interchangeably, and if you're new and you don't know what that is, we've been calling it the comp plan, comprehensive plan, comprehensive guide, guide plan, and ASPIRE. And then also on your slide 30, and that's just an example of, it talks, findings for PUD approval must be in harmony with guide plan goals.
Yeah.
Okay, that's just another, like, okay, the comprehensive guide plan or whatever the terminology is, so that, that's probably confusing to someone new.
Thank you.
Couple of comments, Ms. Chair. Commissioner Farr. Might be helpful to tell a newcomer what topics get talked about under the members' report portion of the agenda. What would be fair game and what's not fair game to bring up under members' report? And then under the three-page commonly-used planning terms, you have a definition for plat, but maybe you could exhaust a few more words to differentiate between what a preliminary plat is versus a final plat, and when they're each used.
Thank you.
Also, the next-to-last slide where you refer to small cell towers and public right-of-way, what exact, what dimensions are we talking about for small?
Mr. Chair members of the Commission, we can certainly take a look at that. I'm sure there's a definition. I don't know the, I don't know if it's regulated by dimension or more the type of equipment that's being provided, so I don't have a specific answer I can give you right now, but we can expand on that.
One more that I, I have one more comment that I just found as I'm looking through this. We talked a lot about, or a little bit about the example of us, okay, it is in here. I was going to say a setback, having that defined. I was looking in the architectural terms section, which didn't have setback. It did have building step back, not to be confused. So, yeah, we're good.
Okay, very good.
I think just a couple of other things. Maybe a bullet point about the work plan, the work plan, under roles, maybe, or something? And then also, maybe there could be a slide or a bullet about, look for a commission banquet. So just plan for that in May, I think it is.
Yep, it is in May.
By the way, I think it looks really good, and this is actually super helpful, I think.
Good.
Does it just have to be training, or could this also be a link to this under the Planning Commission page, just for anyone? Because I think it's actually a marketing tool for people to understand what we do.
Actually, I, you know, we're just kind of kicking this off. You know, you guys were our guinea pigs tonight, so I appreciate, appreciate this. But I would, as we've been talking about it at a staff level, I would expect that once we get it polished up a bit and we introduce it to the new commission members, we'll find a time when the appointments are made, but I would expect that we would have this somewhere on the city's website or be able to direct them to it because they might want to refer back to it. We may have veteran members who want to refer back to it because of those terminologies or, you know, just have a question. So we certainly do want to make it as easily accessible as possible.
I don't think we should post it on the website. I think we take this thing out to other cities, we can sell this. I mean, this is a really good tool to help, you know. I think it gives a really good, high level, like, this is what you're doing, so first sell this, and then we can post it.
And we hope to modify it, then, you know, there's, of course, a lot of very specific information here to the Planning Commission, but we hope that it can be a tool that the Conservation Commission or the HPC or Flying Cloud Airport, that other staff liaisons can adjust for their groups to reflect what their roles are as well. So you guys are step one, so thank you very much for your feedback. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Cleaver.
All right, moving on this evening, do we have any members' reports? None. I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening.
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion, Commissioner Higgins, do I have a second?
I second that.
Second from everybody else. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.